El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, October 21st, 2019. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Phyllis Peterson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may speak.
Good morning. Let us today give thanks for all the gifts that we cherish, especially for the capacity to care for the least among us and for the ability we possess to improve ourselves, our families, and our community. Whatever one's viewpoint, whether derived from faith or from reason informed by science, the capacity to appreciate and thank others is ingrained in the DNA of the human condition. We give thanks to all the volunteers, the heart and soul of our community, who donate their time and talents to help the less fortunate. And in this setting, let us recognize and laud the sacrifices made by many government workers, especially the firefighters and the police officers who risk their lives to safeguard others, no matter where residents live and regardless of whether they are rich or poor. Also, understanding the awesome responsibility of public service, we thank you, members of our county court, for using compassion and fairness and for ignoring personal gain when acting in the public interest. As citizens and voters, we possess great hope that our elected officials make choices that give all people in this community an opportunity to achieve their full potential and that help to build a greater El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you for your words. Well, welcome to our smaller version of the Commissioners' Court, but thank you for being here. We always appreciate everyone participating in our local government, so thank you very much for being here.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4M. We do have a correction to announce to item 4I. Item 4I should read, "Approve and authorize the county judge to sign a consulting agreement with Ralph Sellers and Associates to advise El Paso County in property transactions in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Funding is available in account CP, CP Capital 12, miscellaneous. Contract number 2019-0800." Are there any other items that members of the court or the public would like to vote for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Phyllis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent, but some are able.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring the week of October 21st through 26th, 2019, as BBB Ware Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. Come up, please. Thank you. Well, thank you. My privilege to reach the resolution. Whereas a number and types of scams perpetrated upon consumers and businesses continues to grow in number, complexity, and diversity, costing individuals, businesses, and our economy millions each year. And whereas the Better Business Bureau's mission is to be the leader in advancing marketplace trust, and whereas education is a key to shifting consumer and business behavior toward prevention and protection, the Better Business Bureau and its law enforcement and community partners will be drawing attention to a number of current scams and providing information and resources to help our individuals and businesses change everyday behavior and habits to reduce the likelihood of becoming a victim. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare October 21st to October 26th, 2019, as BBB Ware Week. Sign this 21st day of October, 2019.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Phyllis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good timing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for this resolution on behalf of BBB. Tax accessories with us this morning. And yeah, we're closing this week on Saturday with our free shredding event. This is a service for all community. And thank you to all our partners in this BBB Ware Week with the Office of Texas Attorney General, FBI, City of El Paso, El Paso County Attorney's Office, Tax Assessor for Bliss. Thanks to every agency in El Paso that is helping in this.
Well, thank you. And as I was saying earlier, that I became aware, maybe aware, or one word, because of how much that they do. I had sort of like a narrow understanding and then all the things that you do and to prevent the scam and all these other scams that are taking place, but all the education that you do for businesses and how they can reach out to you, I was very, very impressed. So you've become one of my favorites as far as that we support and thank you for being here today. Really appreciate it. And good luck on getting people. It's really difficult for especially the elderly to get be involved in a scam and what the impact it has on their lives and their finances. So thank you for doing that. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we, we're gonna take a picture, but I don't know how to...
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, go now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Can we take one too? Just for the BBB?
Oh, sure. I can take. I appreciate that.
Three, two. Take one more. Three, two.
Thank you.
We're in.
Item number six is public comment. Judge, at this time, we do not have anybody signed up for public comment unless we do have somebody in the audience, anybody's available that would like to speak in public comment. So we'll take no action on item six.
Hey, Michael.
Good morning. Judge, with your permission, we'd like to ask to move on item up. It would be item number... Item number 20? Yes, sir. Item number 20 from Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the letter of intent between El Paso County, Texas and MOMS On Board to collaboratively to provide a first-class, state-of-the-art, all-inclusive playground on county land with improvements and amenities. MOMS On Board will raise funds that will be directly applied to meet the match for Texas Parks and Wildlife Department's grant for all-inclusive playgrounds. Contract number 2019-0121.
Good morning. Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation developer. We're here to again formalize, we're super excited to formalize our agreement with MOMS On Board to build three all-inclusive playgrounds in the county of El Paso. So one will be in Rising Deer Park in Fabens, one will be in Canotillo at Gallegos Park, and the third one, and the largest one, will be at Ascarate Park. And I would like MOMS On Board to join us.
Is Adrian Moody?
Yeah. Hi, how's it going? What a blessing it is to be here today in front of all of you. My name is Adrian Moody, and I am one of six who make up the board of a fantastic nonprofit in your city called MOMS On Board, or MOP, as we like to call it. MOP works with local leaders to bring more family-friendly amenities to the Sun City and encourages community involvement through our social networking group of over 8,000 family members. A little over a year ago, this mighty group had the vision and perseverance to reimagine the amenities at Ascarate Park. The park is near and dear to everyone's heart, and it took some courage along with a leap of faith from county, county government, to see out on this adventure of raising money for such a great cause. We knew we had our work cut out for us, but when you get a group of passionate parents and community members together, the possibilities are endless. The dream started to become a reality when County Parks Department was awarded the Texas Park and Wildlife Grant that we are discussing today. As of today, MOP has raised nearly $3,000, $300,000, and have a plan in place to secure an additional $200,000 by the first quarter of next year. With that being said, we still need a lot of, all the support we can get. Please help spread the word to all businesses that would like to be a playground sponsor. We have thrown several fundraisers, applied for grants, and asked local businesses to be a playground sponsor. Our next fundraiser is coming this Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00 at the Coronado Tower. We are asking community members to repel off a 12-story building to support our mission. In fact, Judge Chamiego has continued his amazing support of MOP by actually participating as a repeller. Thank you. He has chosen the song "Good Times" by Cheek to repel to. So Judge Chamiego, we are incredibly grateful for all you do. Thank you. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for the commitment El Paso County has had to improve our community and our parks. I want to take a moment to thank a couple people that helped get this whole thing started. Commissioner Stow, thank you for always being available and for believing in our mission. Mrs. Keller is not here today, but thank you for always making time for us and helping us with opportunities around town. As a matter of fact, Mrs. Keller's Rotary, Sunrise Rotary, has committed to sponsoring the musical area of the new park. From former Judge Ruben Bott, was also very supportive and gave us all the encouragement we could have asked for. The next person I'm going to thank needs no introduction. She has worked tirelessly to make county parks and particularly a Scott at the Place of Pride for El Paso County. Mrs. Myers, your hard work has not gone unnoticed. You are improving the quality for so many families here in the Sun City. MOP looks forward to making this a lasting relationship. Our vision to make a Scott at the Park a destination park in our region. Our vision is to make a Scott at the Park a destination park in our region. We know we have work ahead of us, but every day we meet committed people of this amazing city, and everyone is excited to join in and help us with our work. So thank you so much for supporting us.
Thank you. Would you still?
Well, I wanna, I wanna thank all of you ladies for having the vision to do something like this. I think it's something that's definitely needed in El Paso, and I'm glad that we're not just doing it at Ascarate, but to other parks within the county. I think that's very important because, you know, Ascarate is, is, you know, the premier park in El Paso County, but there are other communities that may not be able to access the park so easily. And it's a great idea to be able to offer them the same, the same type of amenities in their, in their own areas. And so, you know, from the very beginning, I've been very excited about this and really looking forward to continuing the work. I'm glad that Veronica Myers and her staff were able to secure a $1 million grant to help with this. And, you know, it's, it's a community project, and we really appreciate and thank all of the members of the community that have also shown up to the fundraisers, that have been available, you know, setting aside time, putting aside money, and making, making this, you know, this endeavor, taking it one step closer to, to, to being a reality. And so thank you all for your hard work, for your passion, and let's get this thing signed.
I just wanna say that what a partnership. Just, that's what I'm impressed about a lot of things, but the partnerships in Howard County and Veronica and the business community. It was something, obviously, when there's, when you hit a target like you guys have, you know it made sense because everybody is excited. I hear so much about it, people talk about it, and, and so, you know, people repel for that project. I don't know where that person's gonna get the courage, but he'll find it somewhere.
We'll help you out.
Thank you, Commissioner Stow, we still have room if you're interested.
I'll watch him all.
No, thank you for everything that you do. It's really a very exciting opportunity. So thank you so much.
It's been fantastic. So thank you for all the support. Thank you. Thank you.
Officer, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. Ladies, thank you for your efforts and your support. You come here and support it as well. Every thing we can do to improve our community is a great thing. People being involved in the community makes it all the better. Mark, one area that we talked about is Westlake. We can do some TLC in that area.
Thank you. We have our, we're very excited too. We just got our first Playground Safety Inspector certification for the County of El Paso. So that's very, very good for us. We are definitely, the county is supportive and investing in their parks and recreation. And this is very important to us, and it's not an easy exam. So I'm very proud of Ben Bias for stepping up and studying and taking the exam and passing. So we have our very first.
Give him a marker, congratulations. Thank you.
So we're very proud of him.
Thank you for bringing us here. Appreciate it, thank you.
And we really wanna thank MOP. Moms On Board, without them, we wouldn't be able to come up with all this funding to be able to do all these parks. And this is very important. These are all-inclusive, so they're not only for kids with different types of disabilities, but they're for the adults also that bring them to the park. So a lot of times, especially nowadays, grandparents taking care of their grandkids, or sometimes it's some of our veteran community taking care of their own kids, and they can't participate in playgrounds because of the accessibility. And now, we will be able to do that in our county parks. So we're very thrilled and excited about it. And we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Commissioner, no.
Just a quick question. If everything goes as planned, when do you all anticipate starting construction?
We will be getting the contract from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, hopefully later this month, that we will have to approve. The county will bring it back up to Commissioner's Court. That'll be the contract between us and Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And then, at that very moment, once we say that contract, we're running, we start. And so, we have three years to complete our projects, all three projects.
And see, and I see more, anticipate more activity on that new sign that's going up, which will also advertise that new playground. So it's an exciting event.
Yes.
Thank you.
Want to approve second?
Commissioner Perez. Aye. Commissioner Dillon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samiego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, county administration. Receive a presentation and discuss and take appropriate action on the formation of a justice leadership committee to address the complexities surrounding the El Paso County justice system. Further authorize the county judge to sign a resolution creating the committee.
Good morning, Judge.
Commissioner.
Good morning.
Joel Bishop, Executive Director of Justice and Community Services. I'm excited to bring this opportunity before you today with this resolution. This has been something in the works for some time with great collaboration with the Council of Judges. Mike Kukara was here, may share a few words about this, the potential of this committee. As you know, we've, we have an unprecedented amount of initiatives, justice initiatives, and the need for collaboration is tremendous right now. Great opportunity to bring a council together, a committee together, to collaborate on the various initiatives, justice initiatives going on within the county. And this is also reflective of both strategic plans of the Commissioner's Court as well as the Council of Judges. It's also a recommendation by our consultant to form this committee. Dr. Fabello recommended this in his recent report. It's a national best practice as well. Other communities have such a committee, and it can be, so long as it's run well and run right, it can be a very advantageous collaborative effort on the part of local communities when it comes to justice initiatives. The Council of Judges did recently pass a resolution supporting this that's similar to this one that's before you this morning. The committee itself, if it's approved to convene, will convene and adopt their own bylaws and finalize those. It's been interesting to have, I've had meetings with all the key stakeholders as part of this. The enthusiasm and the support for this has been tremendous. And I think there's definitely, that reflected the need for this level of collaboration. And I think as you look at the goal and purpose of this, the thing that stands out to me the most is impactful, creating impactful action plans with deadlines and follow-through that can be reported back to the committee. I think that'll be something that is very important to push this forward. There's lots of kind of bifurcated projects that go on. I think this will bring them together and put deadlines on them and create very impactful committees. So we're asking you to consider passing this resolution, and then designate, and then the next item will be to designate, decide who from the Commissioner's Court would be representatives. Mike, could I ask you to say a few words from your perspective? And a little bit of the history on this. I know some of you had this in mind before Mike or myself arrived in El Paso. This wasn't something we thought of. This has been in mind for a while. When Mike got here as the Executive Director of the Council of Judges, he brought it up to me as something that he thought was important. And I said, this is something I've been thinking about as well and discussing with some of you. So over the last six months or more, we've talked about this and worked on it together in a collaborative effort. And I appreciate this support. I don't think we would be here at this stage without Mike's help and assistance and the assistance of the Council of Judges as well.
Thank you. Judge Samiego, Commissioners, I appreciate being here just to say a few words. And I wanna echo what Joel said. It's, this is considered the best practice. And from my perspective, and I think that largely comes from talking with officials, commissioners, county administration, that there is a need for a practical need for a coordination body to oversee the many, many projects we have to either innovate or fix processes. And I wanna thank you for also considering urging the creation of this council. The judges are excited, and I'm excited. We look forward to working with everyone through this process and perhaps through this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Look like the missing component to some greater things. Just so many things happening and being able to encapsulate them a little bit better.
We hope so.
Commissioner Perez.
Well, I just wanna thank Joel and Michael and everybody who's involved in this. I know you met with a lot of stakeholders, but the bylaws are just very well-written. I think it was very well-developed. You know, I don't know how counties operate without such a council. Just the way county government is structured, you know, with various selected offices, you know, there needs to be some body where at least everybody can come together to discuss these issues. And so, you know, it was something that was, was, you're right, Joel, but we thought about it several years ago, but we were in the process of going through several other reforms that we felt that took priority. But I'm really just pleased with the way that you all have gone about the process of including stakeholders and emphasizing the importance of this, you know, of this body to everyone. So thank you for all your hard work, because, you know, we would have got to this point. And I look forward to what the leadership council will, the Justice Council will work on.
And thank you, Commissioner, for everything you've done to drive this forward. Appreciate it, very much appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
We need.
Yes, sir.
Make our motion to approve.
Will.
Commissioner Perez. Aye. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samiego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, and there is a correction that we would like to read as well to this item. Item number eight is to discuss and take appropriate action to appoint two members of the El Paso County Commissioner's Court to the El Paso County Justice Leadership.
Yeah, so this maybe is the hard part. You need to decide who's gonna participate in the committee.
You need two from the.
We need two from the Commissioner's Court. The two, as you see in the initial membership, which I think will be solidified by the group itself, is there's your two administrative judges, two commissioners, the sheriff, the district attorney, the public defender, defender, and the county attorney.
Can we do like a bio or something like that? I mean, I know Commissioner Perez would be key to this. I mean, I would like to, if the court pleases, favors that I participate.
And I want, I'd love to participate as well.
Well, we can only have two, because otherwise it's gonna be a quorum. And I agree with you, Judge, that Commissioner Perez has to be on this committee.
So how do we?
Make a motion to.
You would just need to make a motion of who, the two individuals that you would like, unless you'd like to have further discussion on who would like to serve. But that's how you effectuate the action here.
We have two, Commissioner Robinson and Judge Samiego. Commissioner Robinson, would you like to add anything to?
Well, I think that I would be a good voice, serve with committee. Been involved with law enforcement for, and I believe in some of the things that, as far as reform, there are some things that I have encountered not directly with, heard from constituents in our community, throughout the community, not just in areas I serve, that sometimes people feel they need to have a voice, and sometimes they don't understand what the intricacies of law enforcement is for. Particularly when you talk about court administration. For example, the question is, which I don't think anyone really have answered there too, but to better explain, for example, whether you get charged with whatever account you're charged with, and you get indicted. So bail. One case, you would get the bail for three thousand dollars. Another case, the bail is fifty thousand dollars. And it's similar, so how did this one person get three thousand dollars and the other person, who may have had lesser offense or charge, his bail is fifty thousand dollars? So I think I can be a voice for the community, help bring that to a better understanding.
Well, I guess the only, if we're campaigning, if you already have one commissioner, and then I think in my case, it'd be someone at large that would, you know, be able, any constituent from any precinct. Obviously, I've worked in forensic psychology, worked in prisons. I was a probation officer, very, very involved in mental health. And mental health is a huge component of this entire package. So I feel very strongly that I would be able to represent because of that background and my involvement, since I've been here, my involvement in, you know, touring the jails and talking to Sheriff Wiles, and of course, everything I've learned from Commissioner Perez on some of the things that he's trying to accomplish. So that would be my position as to why I should be that person.
To avoid further awkwardness, to move this along, and all respect to all members of this court, I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Perez and Judge Samiego.
And I just wanted to make a comment, okay? To prolong the awkwardness.
Thank you.
You know, I as well was interested in serving on this committee, but I will defer, you know, I just think that, you know, we need to have folks on this committee that have, that have gone through, I mean, there are a number of members on the court that have gone through this process from the beginning. You know, I know that Commissioner Perez has been kind of the spearhead of a lot of these criminal justice reforms and initiatives. However, you know, there are others of us that have also been there along the way and really, I think, understand this and understand where it comes from and where we wanna go and have been very vocal about our own opinions as to what happens. And so, I would just, you know, respectfully request that, you know, though we're wanting two members, that I would really like to have updates on what's going on with this committee on a very regular basis. And also feedback, you know, be able to provide feedback as to what's going on if I'm not gonna be on the committee. I mean, this is something that is really important for me as well. And so, I just request that of the two members who are gonna be on the committee. And I also think that we should talk about, I guess, I don't know if it's in the bylaws yet, the length of the appointment. I mean, I don't know if we wanna, if that's been stipulated in the bylaws or if that's something that we need to talk about. But I think other members of the court should also have the opportunity to, you know, to rotate on and off.
That's definitely something we can put for the consideration of the committee as they adopt the bylaws. And the other thing I'd mention, Commissioner Stout would supplement your comment there. It was real important, and Mike and I discussed this, to ensure that whatever works going on in this committee, that it is regularly communicated to both the Council of Judges and the Commissioner's Court, and to make sure that the voices are heard and that it's not siloed in any way. So appreciate your.
By the way, you guys have done a great job of, you know, communicating and getting us involved, having discussions and orientations. We'll just keep that going forward.
We need a second.
There, there was a motion on the floor.
Second.
Commissioner Perez. Aye. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
No.
Judge Samiego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you both, appreciate it. Thank you, Judge.
Item number nine, litigation justice and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division grant award for the County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, with a thirty-six thousand dollar cash match from the County General Fund for a total project cost of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. The grant period is from October first, two thousand nineteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Further authorize the county judge to sign the resolution as a requirement of the grant. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero seven nine one.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Selena Sines, Assistant County Attorney, and the Trial Team Chief with the Protective Order Unit for the County Attorney's Office. I'm here today on our Victim Resource Program grant. We were just awarded our grant for this year. Our award notification came in on December the tenth, and so I'm here before you to ask for a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to accept that grant award. Our Victim Resource Program, this would be the second year that we've received those grant funds for this program. Last year was our pilot, our pilot grant award. And this grant award covers a two-year, two fiscal year period. So the one hundred and forty-two thousand, the thirty-six thousand dollar match, and the total is over a period of two years. This past year, during our grant program, we did go ahead and hire our licensed master social worker. Her name is Yudi Villa. She's been working in our office since the end of January of this year. And just to give you a little bit of an idea of what kind of services she's been able to provide to our victims of family violence, sexual assault, child abuse, stalking, and harassment. She's been able to provide individual services to seven hundred and sixty-four individual victims. She's provided over six hundred referrals to other services and resources in the community like legal aid, the Office of Attorney General, Child Support Division, housing, childcare, applications for public benefits, long-term counseling, medical care, and information about food banks. She's also provided information about victim rights and the criminal justice process over four hundred and twenty-five times. She's completed two hundred crisis intervention. She's completed 200 crisis intervention sessions, 333 individual counseling sessions, and accompanied victims 456 times to court or to other legal appointments. And she's been able to reach an additional 500 members of the community through her outreach and presentations that she's conducted since February, I would say. We're very excited to have received the award on this grant for another two-year period. We think it makes a tremendous impact on the victims and the survivors that we serve in the County Attorney's Office and the Protective Order Unit. And so I would ask, I would request a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Grant Award for the County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program in the amount of $142,768.72, with a $36,000 cash match from the County General Fund, for a total project cost of $178,768.72. The grant period is from October 1st of 2019 through September 30th of 2021. And further authorize the county judge to sign the resolution as a requirement of the grant.
So moved, okay. Commissioner Leon? Just a quick question, Selena. When did you say we were notified of the award?
October 10th.
October, oh.
Yes, so just a couple of weeks ago.
Commissioner Perez?
And maybe this is more for administration, but this was, the county match portion hasn't changed, right? It's what was approved back, I mean, everything's the same.
Yes, yes, everything the same, and it was $18,000.
And maybe, like, background, like, background information, should just make that clear, just so we're just.
But thank you for those stats, very impressive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the statement of grant award for the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Domestic Violence Unit Grant Award in the amount of $148,751.85, with a cash match of $144,751.85, for the grant period beginning September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2020, for its overall project amount of $293,503.70. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Funding is available in General Fund Domestic Violence Transfer Grant Match. Contract number 2019-0759.
Good morning, I'm Jaime Esparza, the district attorney, and this is our part of our domestic violence effort. It funds a half an investigator and half of the supervising lawyer. We've done a lot of great work through that unit. You all actually supply more than the grant match in resources, because it takes more than these two to run that office, that unit. We review domestic violence cases Monday through Friday. We reach out to victims of domestic violence within 24 hours. We do that seven days a week, and we also, besides the fact that we've been nationally recognized, and across the state, and we train prosecutors across the state, we also developed the idea of videotaping victims at the scene, which has really been extremely helpful in all of our domestic violence cases. And I ask that you approve the grants.
Thank you, Mr. Esparza. No, I'm sorry, but the videotaping, and just for the folks listening at home, makes a big difference because of time lapse, and there are sometimes victims will change their mind as to the severity of the abuse, and whether they want to continue with the prosecution or not.
You know, one of the most difficult things about understanding domestic violence, once, it's a relationship crime. We actually don't have those many in the penal code, but here, the victim and the defendant know each other before, they'll know them afterwards, and that makes that case difficult. And so what a lot of people ask is, well, how often will she, and it's usually a female, ask us to drop the charges? It's very frequent, and it's understandable, because there are all sorts of pressures to drop the charges. It is possible that it didn't happen, but that's not usually the case. You can tell just from the evidence, the 911 call, the photographs, what they tell us. But she, so we have that pressure, they always have that pressure. If you're ever interested, you could Google 50 Reasons Why She Stays. There's about a three-page article that has 50 reasons why she stays in the relationship, or would ask us to drop charges. That author, I know her well, and I'm sure there were probably 50 more after that. So that makes it difficult. So one of the things we did was, we went to, we talked to the victim within 24 hours, because we want to know how she feels at the moment. After the police talked to her, we want to make sure she's safe, and then we want to understand the crime. But videotaping her at the scene has been really helpful, and you're right, Commissioner, because we catch her at the scene, so we know what she was thinking at the time. So if she comes back and is telling us, well, I'd like to drop charges, we at least know what she thought of at the time, and it makes a huge difference in helping us resolve these cases. I mean, all we're really trying to do is hold the batter accountable, and we're trying to encourage healthy relationships. Just on the side, I would tell you one of the things that I still find shocking, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so I've been saying this a lot this month, but what I find shocking is, we don't really have public outrage over domestic violence like we do over DWI. And we, I still get like 5,000 domestic violence cases a year, and we still have women and men, mostly women, living in an environment where there's not a healthy relationship, and some of these households have children, and so we're setting a bad example. But it's still very hard for us as a community, not just El Paso, but statewide and nationally, for us to talk about domestic violence in a really smart and effective way. We're just not doing that, so that we have conversations where we're teaching either our children, or those adults in our community who don't have healthy relationships, what a healthy relationship is, and one thing for sure, a healthy relationship does not involve violence. And so it's complicated. But the videotaping of the victim has been extremely helpful to us, and we have gotten a lot of credit for videotaping the victim, but if you think about it, all we did was prioritize the crime. If we had a murder case, we videotape the scene, we capture that scene in all sorts of ways. And we should, it's a murder, and that's a horrific crime. What we did was, with a simple use of a camera, and the help of the El Paso Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, they now are able to capture her statement at the scene. And we get it, because of the technology, we get it the very next day. And so it's been really helpful to us. And others across the state have copied us, and we've been studied, and it does help us resolve our cases in a smart way.
Thank you for those additional comments. Thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioner Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. DA, for all you do and have done over the years. In regard to the situation, too, when you have a domestic violence issue, so help me understand the process. So you'll call at the time that the incident occurs?
No. What will happen is, the El Paso Police Department or the Sheriff's Department respond to the domestic violence call, right, and then they'll make the arrest. And because we have a DA on duty 24 hours a day, every day of the week, every day of the year, then we know who was arrested in the last 24 hours. Like today, we have people going out, we have an investigator, and I have an advocate going out to talk to these victims, so that we get to find out, we learn whether they're safe, and we want to make sure they know what services are available. But we don't get involved until after the arrest is made. During the arrest, the officer will videotape the victim, and they have a set, we ask him to ask, they have a list of these 15 questions we want them to ask, and then they videotape that. We don't, on the sheriff's cases, the sheriff has those body cams, so on the body cam, at one point, they'll ask him those questions first.
Okay, so you're involved, not at the same time, but within 24 hours?
Right, right.
Well, you know, it's unfortunate that some individuals who are supposedly leaders in a community, policy vickers, become part of the property.
I can tell you, we treat every case the same. I'm really pleased with the process that we use. That videotape has been very helpful. What we have gotten lots of credit for was reaching out to that victim within 24 hours. That has been a huge success for us. It really gives us a smart and accurate look of what happened. And then, you're welcome any day to come, but today at 11:45, we're gonna review the cases that occurred on Saturday, Sunday, and on Monday. And we'll be there, and you come look at it, we do it every day. But today, it's an extra-long day, because those three days are involved. But we'll look at those cases, we're gonna look at the police report, we're gonna look at the video statements, we're gonna look at the statements she made, photographs, 911 call, everything that was collected. Because of the technology, we can do that today. We can do, over the weekend, tomorrow, we're gonna review everybody that was arrested within the last 24 hours. It's become really helpful to us.
What is your prosecution rate? And also, if the victim, for whatever reason, decides to retract her, his or her statement, what happens?
Okay, so again, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head what our conviction rate is. I can tell you, since we've had the process, it's increased. But if she decides, and this is very frequent, it's not uncommon, that she wishes not to pursue the case, she would like us to drop charges. And so in some situations, we will drop the charge, especially when all we have is her testimony, and if she's not gonna be cooperative, it may not be possible for us to prosecute the case. But if we have other evidence, extrinsic evidence, like photographs, the 911 call, independent witnesses, maybe the police officer saw something. If we have other evidence and we can prosecute without her assistance, we're gonna go forward. And so that usually occurs. So usually there, you can just, we can take statements from the 911 call. I've listened to thousands of 911 calls, and you can hear it, you can hear it in their voice, and then, and we also know, and we'll do this, we'll do this every day, we look at his criminal history, and we look at her criminal history. So we know how many times we've been out there, how many times we've arrested him, how many times, maybe, we've arrested her, because sometimes they call on each other. So it's a very complicated case, it takes a lot of work, and we are, I'm really happy about this program, because we've really learned how to take a critical look at these cases. And I hear this criticism all the time, that we accept every case, and that is not true, we do not. They're very difficult cases, as difficult as the most complex murder case that we handle. Just because these people know each other, and that makes these cases very tough.
From your experience, the one incident where the individual was arrested, is that only the case where it's a one-time incident, or it had happened many times before, but this is the first time it got reported?
Well, it's my experience that they don't call, the victim doesn't call the police on the first time they've been assaulted. They've probably been assaulted many times before they called the police department. And you can see it, and you can tell, when we go to talk to her within the 24 hours, like, as we speak, we have investigator and advocates knocking on doors as we speak. And they tell us, it's really some incredible stuff. Sometimes they'll tell us, well, ask them, was this the first time? And they'll say, no. They'll, we'll ask them, you know, well, what's the environment like? And they'll say things like, well, he doesn't have a job, or he smokes marijuana all day long, he's been doing cocaine, he's on meth, you name it. And so there's a variety of reasons, and we get all of that from our 24-hour visit, if we didn't get it from the police officer at the scene. And so, you know, it's just a complicated case. But I believe, and I'm pretty comfortable about telling you that, by the time we got involved, the El Paso Police Department, the Sheriff's Department got involved, she's been assaulted many more times.
One last thing.
Yeah, we need to get back on scope here.
You impacted, you had all the children.
I think the, the quick answer is, the studies show it impacts them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay.
Much approved, sir?
Thank you.
I just, same question as before, the match was the same as what was authorized.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, approve and authorize the acceptance of the fiscal year 2019 Operation Stone Garden Grant Award for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $822,433.97, and the Office of the Constable Precinct 6, in the amount of $21,195.92, for the period beginning September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2021, with no county match required. Contract number 2019-0748.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners Isabel and Lundis from Budget and Fiscal Policy from the Grants Division. This will be our 10th year in accepting this award. In years past, as we've done currently, we submit an operations order for the whole county of El Paso's law enforcement entities. And because it's just the sheriffs and the constables from the county themselves, that's what we're accepting the award for. But we do write it for the whole entire county's other law enforcements, such as El Paso Police Department, Antelope Police Department, Socorro Police Department, San Luis Marshals Office, and the Texas Department of Public Safety.
Thank you.
Approved, sir. I just wanna, I just wanna ask one question. It's, I mean, I've brought this up before with the sheriff, but I just wanted to make sure that that it's clear to us and to the public that Stone Garden grant money is not used to help the Border Patrol in arresting and apprehending immigrants, right? It's only used for interdiction of drugs and other crimes, right?
Correct.
Sheriff, what?
And we have the sheriff.
Yeah, I can go. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir, when I first got here in '09, our first submission that year was to make it clear that we would not be involved in immigration enforcement. But the Border Patrol has many other duties, as you're well aware. Drug interdiction, the prevention of human trafficking, and other border crimes along the border here in our community. So we wrote the grant specifically to address those issues that are also issues important to the County Sheriff's Office and are consistent with the enforcement of state law. So that's what we've kept to, and you had me run some statistics. And I think the statistics show that it's very, very few. It's, I think, less than 15, right? In a year-time period, that we actually had anybody that was additionally charged with an immigration crime.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, it's a motion to accept.
Question. So on Loop 375, there's a lot of El Paso police officers there along their, but they do report, like, if there are illegal crossings, but isn't that part of Operation Stone Garden, or they do report that to Border Patrol in the event that, let's say, Border Patrol isn't in the vicinity?
You know, I'm not sure what the police department operational plans look like. Before we spend any of their money, we actually prepare an operation plan for a particular event. We're, like, we're gonna put additional deputies out in the Torneo area, for example. And then we would explain in there, in that operational plan, exactly what we intend to do as far as, let's say, there's increased activity, drug activity. So that would be what we would be looking for, and we'd put that in there. Certainly, there is a potential that law enforcement could come across undocumented immigrants. SB 4 would allow those officers, and there's nothing that we could do about it, to cooperate with the federal government and ask those questions to a person who's lawfully detained or arrested. But we have found that that's been the exception rather than the rule in looking at our statistics.
I have one more question, Sheriff. When, so this is to accept the actual grant, so we did the application before, and we typically apply through the county for all the other law enforcement organizations, right?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can, as we create this application, I don't know if it's possible, because you said you don't know what the operational issues are with the El Paso police, or any of the other police agencies, or law enforcement agencies. But is there a way that we can request that of them before we approve the the actual application of the grant, to make sure that they're not?
In the grant application for all the agencies, do we leave out the immigration enforcement, or just ours?
No, we do stay for all four agencies.
Yeah, so it's actually not in there for any of them.
Is that a grant requirement? Is that?
No, we, which.
For, for the immigration enforcement? Well, interestingly, they want it in there, but I told them that I would not seek the money if immigration enforcement was one of the issues that we would be expected to do. And they agreed to that. Because here, they need our assistance of all these other agencies to help them do the other things. So they're willing to, to leave that out in order to give us the money for the other issues. And by the way, there's some other things that we've gotten out of them through this money that's really been beneficial to the county. For instance, we just purchased, was it four or five buses, vans to transport? And they allowed us to buy those because at the time when they were having the influx of undocumented immigrants and they were holding them down, like, under bridges and stuff, they were having problems getting transportation. So they asked us, hey, we'll let you use those vans for whatever you need. We use them for transporting from the jail annex to downtown. Can you use those vans and your people paid by Stone Garden to help get them to the migrant processing centers so that we can get them out? Especially the ones seeking asylum. So we were able to do that. And then we also asked, and they're looking at this right now, to pay, to pay detention officers overtime to open up the booking at the jail annex to process federal inmates and get them out of the line downtown that holds up El Paso police officers and sheriff's deputies from getting back in the field. So we're looking at that right now, whether that's something that can be done. So that'll kinda, we get a lot of complaints sometimes that people start backing up on the second floor, the booking. And if we can pull the feds out and put them at the jail annex, we can move people through the system quicker downtown, make it more efficient. And I guess I talked too much because now Representative Robinson has a question.
No, thank you, everybody. You know, the thing is, the sheriff has been on record as far as, his department or offices was not being involved in immigration. But by the same token, all the other law enforcement agencies, when it's involving PD or sheriff department, you've got, we need to understand the incorporation and participation from all the other law enforcement agencies, be it local or federal, Border Patrol, Customs, or whatever. Example was, it happened on August 3rd. You had all law enforcement agencies provide support and backup. So while PD may be short, while sheriff department may be short, they can always call on the other agencies and say, we need your support. You, you will see that when unfortunate situation where we have a law enforcement officer pass away, where, where you will see all of the other agencies, local law enforcement and federal, in support of, of sheriff's office and our PD.
Thank you. Sheriff.
Thank you.
It's great to hear on, on the processing of the federal elsewhere because it does, it does hold up, like, local law enforcement. And that was part of Dr. Favela's study for the court recalls when they were trying to take the time analysis of how long it takes. But that, that, that's the equivalent of putting, I think it was like 35 officers back on the streets if, if that processing time can be reduced. So, but I knew that, like, when the feds get there, that things get backed up. So that's.
Yeah, it, it depends. I mean, there's a lot of variables there. And I think that 35 was, if we were to accept the inmate at the front door, if I recall that report from Dr. Favela, which I have some issues with that because they haven't been seen by medical staff yet. And they haven't been searched yet, and if they have contraband, then we're stuck with that. But definitely, there are times when it does get busy up there. And it's not just the feds, but the PD, sometimes they have that private. Right, and, and they'll wait till they get groups of people, and then they come down and drop off 10, 15, 20, ready to be sent through intake. And that can back it up, too. So you've got, I mean, there's just a lot of things that can impact the wait time up there. But we're working on some other stuff, too. You might be aware that we, for those that are given PR bonds on the first floor, we've got kind of a fast lane because they don't have to go through medical since we're not gonna be putting, putting them in the facility. Nor do we have to inventory their property since we're not gonna accept it because they're gonna be right out. That's in place right now, and it speeds up the release for that particular individual and gets them off the floor and gets them out of the line for intake. And we're also looking now to see if we could do the same thing for those individuals who already have a bond, ready to go. So if somebody gets arrested and their family's at the bonds company, the bond company, by the time they get through the first floor and they're ready to go upstairs to the second for booking, if we already know they've got a bond and they're not gonna be there, we want them to skip that process, too. We still have to do the booking, the fingerprint, photograph, paperwork. But we don't have to do the medical or the property taking. We do have to do the mental for the 1622, but we're trying to get that done on the first floor. Get that all out of the way. So we're hoping that speeds it up, too.
Thanks, sir.
Reduces the line, gets people through quicker, and gets the officers out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bittes.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Somanyego.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item number 12, Economic Development. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign a letter of support to the El Paso Metropolitan Funding Organization for the El Paso County Water Improvement District Franklin Canal Trail Project.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Valerie Venecia, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. And with me today from the El Paso County Water District Number One is Mr. Jesus Reyes and Mr. Omar Martinez. They're going to be providing you with a presentation that they also provided to the Historical Commission as part of their request for a letter of support. They approached the Historical Commission in accordance with Section 106 review, which is required by federal law. And also, just for general consulting and feedback as the Franklin Canal is a National Register Historic Property with the federal government.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good morning, Judge Somanyego. Commissioners Jesus Reyes for the El Paso County Water Improvement District. And this is a, another piece of the puzzle that the judge and I sit on the Paso del Norte Health Foundation, I guess you would call it, the Trail Committee. And we've been working with them on several locations where we can assist. We have 350 miles of canals and 300 miles of drains that people find that's the safest place for them to walk, jog, or ride their bikes. And so we're working with the Paso del Norte Health Foundation on assisting them to connect the trail from the New Mexico State Line all the way to Favens. And we've done some other projects with TexDOT, El Paso Water Utilities. And now we're working with the Medical Center of Americas to do the project that's called Franklin Canal Trail Project. It's roughly from North-South Freeway through the zoo, along Paisano, all the way to Fox Plaza. And what we wanna do is concrete line the channel where we wouldn't need to go back in there with our heavy equipment to maintain the banks or mow the inside of the channel. And at the same time, also build a trail that will connect this walking path from Bowie High School all the way to Fox Plaza as the next step. There are federal grant monies available for this project through the Bureau of Reclamation. There's state grant funding available through the Texas Water Development Board. And there is money available also for grants through TexDOT. So we are aggressively seeking your endorsement on this project and, which will beautify the canal and help the El Paso Zoo, the Medical Center of the Americas, and the El Paso Independent School District along that, that area. So I would ask for your support on this project. It's, it's something that, you know, as urbanization occurs, housing and other development occur around our canals and our drains. So we're trying to work with, with developers, with the public, with the city of El Paso, now with a county, on, on several projects. And if you'd like to see a project that we just, that's about 90% completed from Loop 375 to Karnes Avenue, along Alameda, we just did a, a combined project with TexDOT, El Paso Water Utilities, and, and ourselves. And we brought along the Paso del Norte Health Foundation, and we've made that walking path available for them. So with that, I'll answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Excellent work.
Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you. One, one of the issues I had in the past with the city was when we established these bike trails and all of this stuff, you know, but then there was no connectivity. So as I understand what we're doing here, that there will be connectivity?
That's, that's correct. We are, there's several areas. We've got a couple of grants that were just awarded to us for the Upper Valley for, where we'll be concrete lining the Montoya lateral and the Montoya A lateral. And with the opportunity of working with the city of El Paso on doing a walking path and connecting to the path along the Rio Grande.
And there will be filings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leon.
The, the one that you mentioned from Karnes and Alameda to Favens?
To Loop 375.
To Loop 375?
Yes.
And that's along the canal there?
Yes, it's along the, the, our Franklin Canal. And it's a project that we did. The El Paso Water Utilities water line was on the opposite side of Alameda, on the north side of Alameda. They didn't have any space to upgrade that line, so they needed to come to the south side of Alameda. They didn't have any property. So I, I allowed them, through a, a joint project that we did together, to place that, that new water line along our canal bank. And then TexDOT had no way of expanding Alameda in that area. As you well know, that they're putting in medians and sidewalks on both sides. So on the south side, they had nowhere to go with a sidewalk. They didn't have the space available. So I, I, working with them, they paid for the concrete lining of, of our channel. And I allowed them to put, place the walking path on our canal bank instead of a sidewalk, which helped Paso del Norte Health Foundation also connecting, and eventually connecting the Playa Drain to Alameda. And then it'll take a path along the Franklin Canal all the way to Favens.
I, I go through there, I've just not noticed it.
Uh-huh. It's, it's turned out real nice. The only thing we're lacking is benches for people to sit or shade areas. So the county of El Paso has any extra funds, we, we would welcome any funding for, for that. And I'm sure the Paso del Norte Health Foundation would also.
That was a great lead.
Well, I take every opportunity I can.
Well, one of the, the trail from Vinton all the way to Favens, one of the reasons it's, it looks so, you know, that it's gonna happen is that they're connecting to different situations that already exist. And so that makes it really, it, it, the efficiency of what is being accomplished is much, much faster. So, and this is part of the connectivity.
And the Playa Drain, you know, is, the, El Paso Water Utilities purchased it from us. And the Health Foundation funded a walking path, bike path, jogging path. And it's real nice, if you all haven't seen that, which can be connected to Escarate, what do you call it?
Meadows.
Escarate Meadows. Eventually, I'm going to be working with a judge on, we've got 12 acres of land that we own between a neighborhood. And Escarate, the, the judge has approached me on, about working together to connect that neighborhood. So there's, there's a lot of.
All the way around and get back on a car instead of being, having access to a park, which is not the right thing.
There's a lot of ideas, you know, we not only furnish irrigation water, but we try and help with the community as much as we can.
Christina is cringing right now. As to where we're deviating a little bit, but, but thank you. Appreciate it. We tell me what you do.
Judge. I said, you met with the NPO technical staff regarding this since it is on the, on the Transportation Alternative Cent roadside funding, and they've, they've told you to gather it.
Yes, we've been working with, with them and TexDOT on, on applying for their funding. We, actually, we had an application that we were going to submit, but we held it back because we weren't quite ready. But there are other funding opportunities that, that we're seeking that maybe we can do the whole thing and beautify everything to everybody's satisfaction.
Well, meeting with them is critical if they can help identify, because, because the, the funding sources are constantly changing. We, we just took a vote, I remember on Friday, to free up certain funds that are given to the CDI, the, or infrastructure funds, to, to try to free up other projects to move them along. It constantly changes, so it just, it's just good to be in constant contact with them on that.
And the, the big impact for us, it, it helps us because once we concrete line the channel, it helps us with conserving irrigation water. And, you know, we, as we all know, we deliver water to the El Paso Water Treatment Plants. 50% of the water that the city of El Paso, well, the whole community utilizes between the months of March to October comes from the Rio Grande Project. So when you're bathing, you're actually bathing with Rio Grande River water during those months. So it's, it's an important project for everyone.
Great work, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, a motion and a second to adjourn.
Much approved.
Second.
Commissioner Bittes.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Somanyego.
Aye.
Motion here.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you.
Item number 13. Receive a presentation and offer feedback on the windshield survey completed as an update to the Downtown Architectural and Historical Survey Draft.
All right. Good morning, Judge Somanyego. Commissioners, once again, Valerie Venecia, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. And I'm here this morning to bring to you the windshield survey. We're going to review the, what it addresses as part of the draft that was submitted to you in 2017. And just as a quick refresher for those who are new to the court, the draft that was submitted in 2017 consists of a narrative outlining all of the preliminary findings and recommendations, followed by a very lengthy, nearly 1,000 pages, which includes the inventory of all of the properties and resources that were surveyed, all of the forms for the properties that were recommended as eligible for individual listings to the National Register for Historic Property. It includes photo contact sheets and maps, including Google Earth KMZ files, and resources that we can use as a guide in furthering economic development as part of our preservation efforts. The draft report also consists of maps of the survey boundary, which are outlined here in red. And if you notice, the area south of I-10 includes all of downtown Segundo Barrio, Chihuahua, and Duranguito. And then the area of the survey boundary north of I-10 is the area under consideration for expansion, which is the currently established Rio Grande Historic District. This is a different view of the same map that you just saw. However, this time, we're outlining, the shaded yellow and blue areas include currently existing historic districts. The red area is the suggested El Paso Historic District, encompassing all of the aforementioned areas within downtown. And then the blue bound, the blue dotted boundary is the suggested expansion for the Rio Grande Historic District, with the black dotted boundary indicating the suggested boundary for the El Paso Historic District. And then all of the dots that you see scattered throughout the, both, or I should say, throughout the survey boundary are the structures and resources that are being considered for, or that are being recommended as individually eligible. Overall, the recommendations remain the same. Our consulting team at Hardy, Hackett, and Moore continue to recommend just under 10% of all of the nearly over 1,700 properties that were surveyed are being recommended as eligible for individual listings to the historic district. And they're also recommending that, rather than establish individual districts, that the survey boundary area south of I-10 be established as one large National Register Historic District. be established as one large National Register Historic District, encompassing nearly fourteen hundred historic resources. And then they're also recommending that the area outlined in the blue dotted lines be expanded on the existing Rio Grande Historic District. Now we get to the windshield survey. If you notice, all of the green dots are structures throughout the entire proposed El Paso Historic District that they're recommending as eligible or contributing to the, to the district. And if you'll also notice at the area towards the north of the proposed district, the kind of odd shaped elongated structure, that's actually the Baton Memorial Trainway, which is currently on the National Register. And as far as changes to any properties, it was noted that there's some fencing that's been erected on the two hundred and three hundred blocks of Chihuahua and Overland Streets. However, they weren't able to address any integrity issues, so there were no changes as far as from contributing to non-contributing. And before we get into the remaining recommendations or changes from the windshield survey, just for everybody's reference, a contributing property is one that's considered adding to the historical or, and/or architectural integrity of the overall proposed district. So here we have, within the El Paso Historic District, there were three properties that changed status from contributing to non-contributing. And this is usually the result of drastic changes to either facade, windows, or structures of the buildings themselves. And then conversely, we saw one building, which is the J.C. Penney Building, that everybody's probably noticed as they walk around during lunch break, with the removal of the facade that was installed back in the nineteen fifties. It changed in status from non-contributing to contributing, which means that it's now also eligible for state and federal historic tax credits if they decide to continue with restore, restoration of that property. And then we also did notice demolition of an apartment building next to First Baptist Church on Virginia Street. Other major changes, there's quite a bit of activity going on in downtown, including new construction on Eighth Street and T Street. There were some single-family housing units constructed. And then other new construction, the Plaza Garage, located at one oh one through, excuse me, one hundred through one oh one East San Antonio. Very large structure, right smack in the middle of the proposed district. And then there were four previously unidentified buildings, three of which are being considered for, as contributing to the proposed district. And now moving on to the Rio Grande expansion of the historic district, changes noticed since two thousand seventeen, when the draft was submitted, from contributing to non-contributing to structures on the three hundred block of Montana Avenue, and then large-scale new construction through EPISD at ten fourteen North Stanton. And then noteworthy, but outside of both boundary areas, were the large construction in front of the Roderick Art Space at six oh one North Mesa, and then also at nine oh five, nine oh five North Oregon. That concludes the changes that were noted as part of the windshield survey to the draft. And you all have been provided with a comment matrix survey. Some of you may have already been completed filling that out, but we're also here to accept your feedback and comments at this time. They are due on Friday to Hardy Heck and More. Once Hardy Heck and More, before we open it up for comments, just really quickly touch on the next steps. So from here, Hardy Heck and More will receive both our, as the county, and the State of Texas Historic Preservation Officer, namely the Texas Historical Commission, comments as of Friday. They will compile all of, both of our comments and finalize the draft survey, which we'll expect to receive by November. After that begins our next phase of deliverables, which most importantly are community outreach with both property owners and stakeholders. It's going to be a very huge undertaking if we are going to convince at least more than fifteen percent of nearly fourteen hundred property owners to undertake this project with us. And then simultaneously, our consulting team at Hardy Heck and More will begin the draft of documenting at length all of the properties noted as either individually eligible or contributing to the overall historic district as part of our nomination package to the federal government. Thank you for listening. Any comments, questions, or feedback?
Any opportunity to, I feel like I'm a little outside the scope of the project, and is there any opportunity that you could meet with us? Or not together, but individually, obviously?
Absolutely.
During the week before Friday?
During the week before Friday, definitely.
Yeah, just so that I could be a little bit more prepared.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Will do.
I've got a question, Valerie.
Yes, sir.
So the additional recommendation of incorporating the area that it's designated north of I-ten into the Rio Grande Historic District. So the Rio Grande Historic District, that's already a National Register Historic District?
Correct.
That's in place, and we would just be expanding it with you, with additional one hundred and five properties?
Exactly. We would be amending the currently established district to expand it to the area south of the currently established district, and including those additional properties.
So on that map, the, what's the, what's the actual boundary of that district? The blue, like the light blue area?
The shaded blue area is the federal district as it currently stands.
Okay.
And the dotted blue is the proposed expansion.
Right, okay.
Which would be submitted as an amendment.
And then, and then the red is, would be the downtown?
Would be the, it would be titled, they're suggesting it be titled the El Paso Historic District, because it encompasses quite a few different neighborhoods.
Right, okay.
Other questions or clarifications I can help provide? All right.
Thank you.
Again, you're still more than welcome to submit your, your matrix sheets to me, and I'll compile all of that with our feedback and submit that to Hardy Heck and More in time with Friday's deadline.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Judge, at this time, would it be okay if we could be purchasing items? Thank you, sir. Item number twenty-one from purchasing. Authorize the sole source award of Cronos Workforce Solutions software for the Information Technology Department to Cronos Incorporated of Lowell, Massachusetts, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Funds are available in general fund ITD maintenance and repair software.
Good morning, Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we are going to be requesting official award via sole source in accordance with statute to Cronos Workforce Solutions. This is for software that is the proprietary and intellectual knowledge of the owner. The sole source documentation has been turned in, and you have a copy of the official memo. And if this is approved, I believe a contract will be coming to you later.
Motion to approve, second.
Commissioner Vettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Somanyo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-two, authorize the sole source award of VoteSafe software and DMX software for the Information Technology Department to VoteTech Corporation of San Diego, California, in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Funds are available in general fund ITD maintenance and repair software.
Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we are also attempting to get another contract signed, and this will be via single and sole source in accordance with statute. All documentation is in your packet, and this, again, is proprietary and intellectual property of the firm.
Motion to approve, second.
Commissioner Vettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon has stepped out of the meeting. Commissioner Stout?
I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Somanyo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
See, if you want, just, I think, have, Deborah, we could get to her item?
Fine, Judge.
Twenty-seven. Are you here for item twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
If you mind, just real quick, we'll get right back.
Skip it.
Yeah, thank you.
No, we haven't voted on this one, right?
We voted, we finished on twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two.
You just need to do twenty.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-seven from grant application.
Caesar, I'm sorry, I just wanted to double check if there was a collective vote?
Yes, there was a collective vote.
Thank you, okay, thank you, excuse me.
Grant applications, approved submission of county grant applications is listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be dropped back to the Commissioner's Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number twenty-seven, with a correction to read in for the county attorney's office. Approve and authorize the County Administration Department, in collaboration with the United Way of El Paso County, to submit a Victims of Crime Act grant application for three million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents to the Governor's Office to fund the El Paso United Community Assistance Center to assist in community recovery efforts due to the August third, two thousand nineteen match shooting incident. Further approve and authorize the county judge to sign a formal letter to the Governor's Office to waive the nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cent match, match amount for this funding. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution. Contract number two thousand, nineteen, zero, eight, one, five.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Zuluga with the United Way of El Paso County. And we are here today to request the opportunity to partner with the county and other community partners in establishing a long-term healing process and center that will be located, co-located in the Family Resource Center of the county down on Delta. We are putting in place both the infrastructure and staff, and then working together with community partners, including the county, the city, mental health agencies, and others, to begin to put together a protocol and programs that will entail not only the healing for those that were directly impacted and present for the shooting on August third, but also recognizing that these, these criminal activities affect an entire community. So it is how do we begin to create a system and create programs and efforts that heal the entire community and help us build back in a stronger El Paso County and a stronger community?
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, I spoke with Betsy pretty extensively about this. I've also been, some of the meetings with Deb, we, the cooperation, coordination is great. Department of Community Services, and others, and we fully support this. We think this is a great way to move forward with the community resource movement, and a great way to help you participate as a part of this.
Yeah, I'm really enjoying the community approach. And we've said it all along, that, you know, so many people are up there that don't think that they have access unless they were direct victims. And we've been promoting that as much as we can, and I love the fact that the county is participating in a program.
So not only participating, but leading, and working together with all of us to lead this effort. And that's one of the things I think that is really, we want to really let the community know is that we, the model includes resiliency navigators, individuals who will be going out into the community to not only help individuals be aware of what services are going to be available, but also working to recognize that we want to make sure that we are taking services and resources and knowledge out into the community, into the entire county, into the entire county. Because we know that people sometimes don't think, I wasn't there, I wasn't impacted, I wasn't affected, and that's often not the case.
Just the proximity to our outreach program is just amazing, because of all the additional services that are available.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Robinson?
I'd say that my experience with United Way over the past twenty years, or more, has been great in all of the, I guess we say that United Way with every, has its Midas touch. That everything that she touches turns out great. I have no reservation in saying I want to move to proof.
Second. Was there a second?
Well, I seconded her.
Debbie, thank you for everything you do over and above this program.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson, for all your twenty years of support and dedication to our community and to the United Way.
And we have no twenty.
Thank you. More than twenty, yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Vettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Somanyo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Bunyanis, what item do you have?
I'm just observing today, Ryan.
Oh, good, okay, well, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Going back to the purchasing items, item number twenty-three, authorize a sole source award of RMS, iLeads, and web RMS software for the Information Technology Department to Intergraph Corporation, doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure of Madison, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. Funds are available in general fund IT maintenance and repair software.
Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, I'm once again asking you to approve under statute the sole source purchase of a proprietary software for the records management system that the Sheriff's Office uses. All documentation is in your packet. And I think this will conclude the sole sources for the day.
We'll move to proof, second.
Commissioner Vettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Somanyo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-four, approve and authorize the inter-agency agreement between the County of El Paso and Collin County, and allow the use of contract two thousand seventeen dash zero, dash two-two-three, awarded to U.S. Corrections LLC of Nashville, Tennessee, for prisoner transport and extradition for law enforcement and detention bureau, as indicated in the tabulation. Purchasing approved on October eighth, two thousand eighteen. Funding is available in general fund, Sheriff's Office, jail annex, inmate transport.
Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. I am requesting that you allow us to do a cooperative interlocal with Collin County so that the Sheriff's Office can take advantage of a contract they have in place, which is for something that's very much needed, and it's prisoner transportation and relocation. The pricing is set, the Collin County contract is in place for a couple of years. If you authorize this, an interlocal will be sent before you with the contract for signature, so signing both the signature and the contract and the resulting contract itself. This is something that's been a long time in the making for the Sheriff's Office, because we had a couple of false starts with some other companies that we thought might be able to perform. And even some of the bids didn't turn out the way we needed them to do over the last three years. So this is a really solid solution for the Sheriff's Office.
Commissioner Leon?
Can we, Robert?
I think, does she have a question on the posting? Since Western Franch?
I'm sorry, what? I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm on next to the next one. I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, this might not be a question for you. Obviously, the Sheriff's Office requests this, but is this more beneficial insofar as funding than us doing it ourselves?
I believe there are some benefits, and I believe Commander Chides is here to answer those types of questions. He has some details on the funding.
He's right. You want to ask him, he's right behind us.
No, he's right there. Commander, I just have a quick question. Obviously, the Sheriff's Department supports this item. My question was, is it more financially beneficial to us to use this service instead of us doing it ourselves?
Yes, we did. We reviewed all of the facts, and we determined that we'd be saving money. Right now, we send our officers out, sometimes four to six officers per week, plus the fuel, the wear and tear in the vehicle, and then the replacement of those officers at the jail. These officers are transporting prisoners. It takes a lot of funding. So by going with this private company, they'll pick up the prisoners. Our officers never leave. There's no expenses other than the payment that we give to that particular company. And most of the counties are going that direction now. Just to save some money.
Right.
Thank you.
And we've also extended it to the warrant section. Also, the deputies we have in the warrant section will also not have to go pick up prisoners. They'll either go pick them up for us or they'll take them over here to other states.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, apologies, I was.
Well, motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-five, award bid one-nine-zero-three-three, off-site vehicle fueling, gasoline and diesel for the County of El Paso to Western Refining Southwest Incorporated of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on October second, two thousand nineteen. Funding will be allocated on an as-needed basis.
Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. In this case, the county performed a bid for off-site fueling. Basically, that's the fuel cards that our um Public Works, Sheriff's Office and other departments can use to refuel. Normally, historically, you've not seen this because we've gone with the city, so in other words, the county's partnered with the city. At the last bid the city did, we found out that they awarded to someone that did not have coverage. And so we had to go out for bid ourselves. This bid was good because it tells us we're getting excellent pricing. Um technically, both offered the same pricing, except the company that did not have full coverage, we could not accept them. And so we will be awarding or requesting award to Western Refining Southwest. This gives the Public Works and the Sheriff's Office full coverage, so they do not have to leave their assigned areas to get uh the gasoline.
Commissioner Leon.
Does this, it probably doesn't, but this this also include compressed gas?
I don't think so.
No.
There wasn't in the bid.
Good morning, Commissioner Judge, Hope and Stateful Fleet Operations Director. This is strictly for off-site unleaded and diesel. Uh there, again, there is no, there is no gas station in the El Paso region that provides CNG. Our only access to CNG is via the city, via inter-local agreement, which is the downtown site, the Montana and the Lafayette, which are city-owned internal CNG station. There are no public gas stations that offer CNG in El Paso. So this is strictly gas and diesel on the fuel card.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson.
I just had a question on the on the posting. Western Refinery? Western Refinery or Marathon?
Um I believe they used to be Marathon, did they not?
No, 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 they're Marathon now.
Right, so the the off-site brand or branch of is still called Western Refinery.
Okay.
Through Firebird.
Okay.
But they sold to Marathon, then it was Endeavor, they've gone through several changes. But the fuel card wing of this entity is still Western Refinery slash Firebird.
We have to award to the people that actually sign the contract. And sometimes when they have subsidiaries and when they have alternate names, we have to go with um who signed the contract. So for us, in this case, it is Western Refinery.
Thank you, Deborah. Motion approved. Second.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
This brings us back, brings us back to item number fourteen, information technology. Approved and authorized the County Judge to sign the software license and maintenance agreement for workforce solutions software between the County of El Paso and Cronos Incorporated. Funding is available in general fund, iT maintenance and repair software. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero six nine two.
Morning Judge, Commissioner Chris Staff as your Chief Technology Officer. The item before you is a routine renewal of our time and labor or our time and attendance software that we use to track all of our time card information for all employees in the county. The software also integrates with our MUNIS system to allow for payroll and the tracking of time throughout the accounting system. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen, approved and authorized the County Judge to sign the software license, maintenance and support agreement for VoteSafe and VMAX between the County of El Paso and Votech Corporation. Funding is available in general fund, iT maintenance and repair software. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero seven three seven.
Chris Staff is Chief Technology Officer. Uh this again is a routine item for software that the county's purchased over many years. Um this is the software utilized in the election system. The county IT is not directly involved with uh the election process other than in the contracting basis. If you have questions about how the software works or what what it actually does, um we've got members of the election here today to help you with that, but we do recommend um approval. This has been the software that the county's used for uh I believe about a decade or more.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen, approved and authorized the County Judge to sign the maintenance service agreement for iLeads Record Management System between the County of El Paso and Integra Corporation doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure. Funding is available in general fund, iT maintenance and repair software. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero seven three nine.
Chris Staff is Chief Technology Officer. Um again, this is a routine renewal of our iLead software. The software manages our records management system for the public safety for the Sheriff's Department. Um the currently, um the county pays the entire portion of this contract and then is reimbursed from the city for their portion of it. Previous percentages have been eighty percent, twenty percent in favor of the county. I think we're currently renegotiating that that amount. We don't know the exact amount that will be reimbursed, so there will be some um some portion of this will be recouped from the city. Um we anticipate this is the last year um of the renewal for this as we move to our web RMS system, which will replace the iLead system. So we do recommend approval for this year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, Public Works. Approved and authorized the County Judge to sign the fiscal year two thousand nineteen Federal Transit Administration Section fifty-three-eleven Rural Areas Public Transportation Project Grant Agreement Amendment Number One, accepting additional vehicle miles funding award of one million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. The original grant award amount accepted was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. And the new total grant award with the additional funds is two million, forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. There is no county match required. Funds will be deposited in rural transportation federal grant, contract number two thousand nineteen zero seven four one.
Good morning Judge, Commissioner Salonzo, Transportation Engineer for Planning and Development Department. Uh this item before you is just accepting additional funds that we received. Uh this is about one point seven million. We were second only to Barrett County in receiving uh the largest amount in in Texas. Um just previous history, uh we did bring before you an item, September seventeenth uh on the original contract for about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Because of the revenue miles that we have generated, uh it's a magical formula that TechStar has, so uh because of that and the the ridership that is continuing to increase, uh we were awarded the additional one point seven. Staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to answer any more questions that you may have. These fundings will go towards our our daily operations, our transits that serve the community.
Approve. Second.
Before, so uh in in TechStar changing their mind and uh sending more money our way, did that necessitate, did you all communicate with them uh that triggered that their change of their uh of heart to send more money your way?
Uh typically what we do, every quarterly, we do what they call a PTA one-twenty-eight. It's a report of our daily daily use for the quarterly. So, once we submit the data information, they kind of um look at all the information, all the the reports from all the counties. And when money comes available, because in in doing the FTA, there's money always at the end of the day, like reconciliation funds. So how they determine where those funds go is based on the revenue miles, so the county, you know, ranked pretty high on their revenue miles, therefore that's where we received a good chunk of that available.
Was this unexpected?
Yes, yes.
I like that.
Yes, I I, you know, I wish I could tell you, every year I'm going to get about two point something million, but no, it's not the case, so uh we're very uh grateful that uh our program is is growing and and providing the ridership that's needed to be able to uh collect or receive additional funding uh this time.
And you all keeping up with the mandated paperwork that goes with it, otherwise, we would have been bypassed, so good job.
Thank you.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fettis.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen, approved and authorized for recommended project listing submission of electronic project forms to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for inclusion in the El Paso Mobility Plan version two thousand nineteen.
Uh, good morning Judge, Commissioners, for the record again, Salonzo, Transportation Engineer for the Planning and Development Department. Uh the item before you is uh to allow the uh Planning Development Department uh the approval to submit our uh EPRS, which is our electronic uh project request forms, to the MPO. Uh just a little bit of history, the MPO, about about two months ago, give or take, had wanted to create a new CMP, a comprehensive mobility plan for the region. So, from there, the the MPO reached out to all the agencies, TechStar, the city, Socorro, Benton, and asked them to submit a list of their priority projects that could be constructed and designed within the next five years. The hopes is to be able to submit something um like one uniform uh CMP to the state and 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 ask for for additional funding. As you may know, we we sometimes don't receive uh a lot of money from the state, but this this direction from the MPO that it's taken is to provide uh more of a plan going forward. Uh so the projects that were identified uh in the CMP uh were projects that could be designed and possibly out for construction within the next uh five years. Um two of these projects, if I could just, you know, I'll go over this presentation that was presented by the MPO uh to the T-PAC and also to the MPO Policy Board. So it just gives you a quick little glance at El Paso Mobility, what they're calling uh version two thousand nineteen. There'll be another, I guess, catchy name at a later time, but that's that's what they're going with right now. Uh of course, one of the one uh one of the items that the MPO wanted to identify in this new CMP is to not only address uh our additional lanes or new roads, but provide multimodal uh uh model, whether it's highway, transit, pedestrian, freight, um um and also other uh 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 types of multimodal in the region. Uh so, a couple of main inputs is the MPO presented, what they're calling the CMP, which is a congestion management plant uh for transit, travel demand, uh management and added capacity. I'd also recognize the original mobility strategy, which was created, which is the RMS. Um and from those, four projects were identified from TechStar, and we're going to a little bit more depth on the list as we uh move forward. Of course, uh the MPO is partnered with priorities of projects, so that's the reason they reached out to all the agencies and 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 asked all agency to submit projects that were high in their agency's list to get funded. Uh along with that, they provided, they had asked for a project readiness and development schedule. And that pretty much kind of sets the the the, I guess, the the template on can a project that we're submitting actually be designed and constructed uh within the next five years? The projects that we identified, especially two of them, the John Hayes and Tierra Verde. I'm confident that we will have that uh project designed and uh environmental cleared within the next two and a half years and then be ready for funding for construction uh year three. Uh this just gives you a tentative schedule, and now these schedules was based on the MPO's uh schedule in reference to, by the time you have to submit your projects, submit your PRFs, uh policy, policy board and T-PAC approval, then submit uh the uh the tip for the revisions. Uh gives you a quick little glance on the timeframe where we're at, so right now we're in in just past October, so um they had already called what they call the on-call projects and this is the reason why we are giving uh we would like to submit these projects uh for uh possible funding in the in the near future. Uh just a quick little schedule and milestones, uh starting in August, uh the MPO staff did meet one-on-one with all the agencies, including the county. Um then September, we submitted our, they continued the one-on-ones. Uh they they did have an ad hoc committee in reference to the CMP, the congestion mill uh uh plant. Uh where in October, a list was submitted to the MPO uh for consideration uh in next month's Transportation Policy Board, uh unless it's changed. I know uh there were some questions about it in this past uh Policy Board. Um uh as it stands right now, uh board will be seeking approval of this uh list. Now, keep in mind that this list is, and I'll I'll, we'll get to that slide. It's several projects, it's not uh guaranteed that all these projects are going to be selected. It's going to be determined on priority and especially what is best for the region. Uh so, even though fif- let's just say fifty were submitted, only five might be approved at the end of the day. Uh this just gives you a list of the projects that were submitted by all eligible candidates, including all the agencies uh from Socorro, Anthony, the County, Horizon, Cedar El Paso, and of course, TechStar. And it gives you uh most of those projects from TechStar, you could see those are the the big uh projects uh reference to the I-ten corridor, uh the Art Craft and then the Borderline Express. So that wraps up that presentation. That just kind of gives you a a quick little background on why we're here. Uh so, these projects that were identified by the county, of course, they were um meant for projects that could be designed and constructed out within the next five years. And just, I have some exhibits, my apologies, I didn't include that at the beginning. Just to give you a location of two of the three projects that we are recommending for approval. So the first project that that the county identified is John Hayes, uh which is a three-mile stretch roadway running north and south. And that would take you from Peligano all the way to uh uh Montwood. Currently, right now, there's no north and south connect uh connection past uh Peligano. So if all the traffic from Horizon and the County would like to go out to the Montana Vista area and the Tierra Dece, they have to uh uh be able to go up either Darrenton right now and then head east, uh west on Peligano, take Loop Three-Something-Five, take Saragossa, and then to Montana, so it's it's quite the stretch. So this project, the first one that has identified, John Hayes, is one of the top projects uh in uh the region uh because it will provide relief stress on Loop Three-Something-Five and Saragossa. We have gotten concurrence from TechStar as it being a very important project for the region. Uh the second project is Tierra Verde, which is another north and south uh connection. Again, this, the the uh now that the county has invested several millions on projects that provide east and west, Rojas, East Lake, uh Peligano, and the New Future, uh now we're looking beyond that on how we get the connectivity between Peligano, everybody, uh uh all the homes and businesses south of Peligano, now north to connect to the Montwood and the city limits uh uh area. Um so I do, would like to add that John Hayes and Tierra have been identified in the Destino Forty-five, which was submitted uh about eh back in twenty eighteen, uh April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. So these projects are 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 not new. We identified these back in uh in the Destino Forty-five. What this CMP is is, the the goal is to see if we could get additional funding. So, for example, if none of these projects get selected when the MPO uh uh selects to uh identify the candidates or of moving forward as being the top priorities for the region, we have already identified funding for these projects in the Destino. They're just kind of spread out throughout the years because of the limited funding that with between now and twenty forty-five. Uh we have projects all scattered in different phases. For example, we have John Hayes design already. We have secured that funding that will be starting here uh next month. Uh the construction for John Hayes is not scheduled for twenty twenty-three, but that's only phase one. Phase two won't happen until twenty twenty-seven. So, uh why we separated it was because of the lack of funding. There's not enough funding to do all the 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 full project. There's not enough funding to do all the, the full project in 2023. Tierra de Este is another project that's identified, but again, Tierra de Este is further out in the fiscal year, I think, 2029. So the reason why we selected these projects were these are the candidates of that, that we could physically design, get environmentally cleared, and offer construction within the next few years, and then hope to secure the construction dollars to be able to move forward with these two projects. The third project that we also submitted is a rural transit where we're calling the startup, the startup assistant year for the first three years. This project, if you recall, was identified part of the Paso County Transit Visibility Study that we presented to the court about a year ago, a year and a half ago. From that project, it identified six scenarios, and two scenarios that the other agencies were supportive was scenario three and six. Either scenario, there was a contribution from all the agencies that they had to contribute and budget so we could create the LGC, which is being drafted. But we felt that if there were some funding available, like CMAC dollars, that we could go after and be able to fund the first three years, and that's why we're calling like the startup fee, like operations, then that would give all the agencies at least three years to be able to budget the funding and create what they're, like a little savings account. That way, if year four comes along and there are no other additional funds that we could go after to continue this program, then by that time, all the agencies would have funds saved up for the next three years to be able to help relieve the cost. And if you recall, some of the agencies, you know, that the, their portion in the original either scenario, three or six, was really tight on the budget, so they made some sacrifices to be able to obligate some of the funds. So this was very supportive from all the agencies about trying to submit a project to see if we could get some funding to kind of take the cost, at least for the first three years, and help all the agencies out, including the county, because right now, the county also had set aside this current fiscal year some funding. Some of the agencies were able to, some weren't, because they were, you know, financially they were really tight. So their hopes is for the next budget year to be able to obligate some funding. So that's the reason why this project was top priority. It is transit, and this is something that the MPO and the region is pushing to have better transit service countywide, and this is why we selected this project to move forward. Now, the best thing with this one is this project wasn't identified in the Distino 45 because at that time, when we were submitting our projects, this project was not completed, so we weren't ready to submit anything. This will allow us to put this project, in theory, in the queue for future funding. So again, these projects are candidates. It will be up to the Policy Board on which projects move forward, and hopefully, at least two, possibly up to three could get selected. If not, then at least we know that two of those three have already been, have some funding out in the outer years in fiscal year, from anywhere from 2022 all the way to 2023. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just want to thank Mr. Alonso for that, always doing a great job in breaking down these complex transportation issues. For the record, Rosaldo Meadows with the Planning and Development Department. What the MPO has done here is requested that the agencies cooperate in a collaborative process to identify what I'm gonna refer to as when the money falling out of the sky projects. Oftentimes, different agencies have different priorities. Whenever non-traditional funding becomes available, from either an allocation from the Transportation Commission, or if there are some unspent funds that carry over into the next fiscal year, there needs to be determination on what project should receive that funding. Up until this point, it's been a very, there are processes and procedures in place to help identify what those projects should be, but what the MPO is trying to do here is identify a unified regional approach on what the priority should be. So in the event that the commission says, El Paso MPO, what are the two projects that you need dollars for, that you have ready to go right now, that there's consensus, there's regional consensus and support for, they can have a document that points to what those two projects may be. Similarly, if there are funds available at the end of the year that carry over into the next fiscal year, that can, that can happen. Just as an example, at this last Policy Board meeting, Tax dot was moving some projects around, and that generated a savings of approximately $2 million between the project that was originally programmed to begin in fiscal year 20. They changed it with a project that costs $2 million less. So now there's $2 million available in fiscal year 20 that may be available to go towards another project. So what this document is doing, what this process and the strategy is going to allow us to do as a region, is to have a list of projects that we wanna, we want to sell not only internally to the region, but also to the state as a listing of projects that we feel are priority. And based on the conversations that we have had with Texas Department of Transportation, with the MPO, and with other stakeholders, we feel that we have very good projects that are eligible for some of this funding, including the regional transit. I would argue that that's probably our first priority because of the importance of expanding transit service outside of the city of El Paso. And so this process will hopefully introduce some, some funding to some of the projects that we, that we already have. So I just want to make sure that, add that additional context about what the reason was behind the MPO's initiation of this process.
Thank you, Rosal. Commissioner Perez?
Just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that, you know, the, the region and the MPO and various regional leaders are frustrated with sort of the lack of funding that El Paso receives. You know, it's often been said that El Paso is 4% of the population, but we receive about 1% of the funding statewide. And, and so what the MPO and various agencies and Tax dot are trying to do, are trying to go after every year, the, is it every year or however, with the discretionary funding?
They think there's different funds available every year.
The Texas Department, the Texas Department, the commission has about $17 billion available over the next 10 years, and they're going to be allocating those. But see, but the criteria is just sort of a mystery to everybody. It's really just at the whim of whatever Tax dot chooses. You know, when we were forced into having leadership of Chairman Houghton, obviously, El Paso had a lot of influence at the Tax dot commission and had access to more discretionary funding for our community. Now that we don't have that representation, it's much more difficult for our community to get that discretionary funding. So this is sort of a coordinated effort to try to be more aggressive in lobbying for the community. These projects might not make it because there are, there are approximately, what, over 50 projects in the region. But the goal is to at least have a unified front, you know, with the MPO, community members going to Austin and lobbying the Texas, the commission, saying that, hey, El Paso should be receiving more of this discretionary funding, which, you know, we haven't so much in recent years. But, you know, that's why it's also important that, you know, the county, as I've said before, it's important that we try to develop as many shovel-ready projects as possible, but then I know there's costs associated with that because it comes along with the engineering, design, environmental. But in the event that there is discretionary funding available, then, you know, it's, it's those projects that are ready to go that often get the funds. And unfortunately, that's why Tax dot, you know, there was some frustration among some members that Tax dot often gets a lot of the funding that comes down to our region, and it's because Tax dot is the only agency that has projects typically shovel-ready and ready to go. Well, they're also one of the largest agencies that has lots of funding to do that. And, and so that's kind of what's been an ongoing discussion at the MPO, but, you know, we hope that, that El Paso is going to be able to be more successful in coming after some of this discretionary funding, you know, from the, from the commission.
I would like to add, just to follow, to add to Commissioner Perez, this is something that Plan Development, we've talked internally about taking a page out of Tax dot and having projects shovel-ready, because every year, at the end of the year, locally, there is some money that comes available, and usually, not at 10 times, it's only Tax dot that's ready to go. So that's something that we want, want to do as we move forward, to have these projects shovel-ready.
So does that also include the airport, airport funding?
No, that, that comes from a separate part of money. It still comes from Tax dot, but that's through FAA funds. This is all FHW funds.
So the Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration, and Federal Aviation Administration all funnel their dollars through Tax dot. There's different divisions set up at Tax dot to administer the different parts of funding.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Sorry if I, there was a lot of information to digest, so hopefully, we appreciate it's clear, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
It would just be a motion to approve. That's all there is.
I saw.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staub?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, so. Well said, thank you.
Item number 19, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed-price construction agreement with Control and Equipment Company for the courthouse BAV project in the amount of $1,211,639. Funding is available in CP Courthouse Improvements 12 Equipment, contract number 2019-0558.
Good morning, Judge. County Commissioners, Robert Sully, Facility Maintenance Director. The current variable air value boxes, better known as BAV, is not performing efficiently and parts are becoming obsolete. The replacement and upgrade for this BAV system will sustain adequate air temperature throughout the county courthouse. We're asking that the judge sign a fixed-price construction agreement with the Control and Equipment Company for the county courthouse BAV project. So did your questions?
One to per, second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staub?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 26, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications listed in the script. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioner's Court for final acceptance and approval. Item number 26 reads, approve and authorize the Community Services Department, through its Nutrition Division, to submit a Texans' Feeding Texans' Home Delivered Meal Grant Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $27,071.25. Further authorize the county judge to sign the application and the resolution authorizing the county grant. Contract number 2019-0774.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Rosalva Hernandez, Program Manager for the Nutrition Program. I'm here to request your approval and authorization to submit an annual application that we always do to the Texas Department of Agriculture. These are funds that we go after each year so that we can supplement the existing funding sources that we have for the home-delivered program. These funds would be for home-delivered meals only, and they are, as I said, to supplement what we already receive from the Health and Human Services and AAA Area Agency on Aging. These funds will help us feed, we're hoping that we continue to get at least $99,000 to $100,000 each year, so that it can help us feed another 100 to 125 individuals that do need their meals delivered to their home. On average, based on, based on our most recent census in 2010, we have 108,000 elderly living here in El Paso. I'm sure from then to today, we've grown, and we don't want to let go of some funds that we can obtain to help our elderly population. With your approval, I'd like to submit this application. It is for a grant period beginning February 1st of 2020, which would go through January 31st of 2021.
Motion to approve?
Second. Commissioner Robinson?
Does this, this supplements what, or replaces what used to be wheels on meal?
It does supplement the funding that we do get for our program with a home-delivered meal.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
I noticed in the backup that, this, you know, unfortunately, this grant funding looks like it's dwindling. In 2017, there was 114, in 2018, there was 110, and then in 2019, there was 99. This 27,000, is this, because you said you hoped to get the 90s?
Yes.
Is this part of a larger request that will come later on?
Yeah, well, what this is, we have to, as the county is requesting these funds, apply for these funds, we have to commit at least 25 cents per senior in our senior population here in the El Paso County. So that's the 108,000, which is why I mentioned it. The actual number was 108,285 seniors reported in our most recent census. So you multiply that by 25 cents, and that's where we get the 27,000. That is the minimum amount that we could obtain, but as you've seen and as you've mentioned, we've obtained more than that amount each year.
I see. Thank you.
One to per, second.
We've got a motion.
Okay. Third, fourth.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staub?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Judge Samanio, you're very, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number 28, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 1 to the County of El Paso's 2019-2020 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase special revenue by $250, increase capital projects by $10,790,247, increase grants by $4,816,715.13, thus increasing the overall budget of
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Francisco Reyes from the Office of Budget and Policy. We provided you all with the backup last week. We ask for your favorable consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staub?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanio?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Commissioner's Court recesses into executive session to discuss item number 29A and B pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioner's Court will convene to take official action.
Thank you. Thank you.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The locations of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online! Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of...
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open sessions. Judges completes all of our items for today.
Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:18 PM.
...that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder including PTSD; or be a victim of military sexual trauma all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119 or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.